And I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education. This is Wednesday, October 15th, 2014. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Stuber?
Here.
Mrs. Kane-Criswell?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Here.
And I would like to ask everyone now to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening and thanks for coming. Hard to believe but the end of the first quarter of our school year is tomorrow. Temperatures are in the 50s, the leaves are falling, and our fall sports teams are winding down their regular season and some have already started postseason play. When we meet again for a regular board meeting, it's going to be November 5th, which will be the day after the Fall General Election, which is on Tuesday, November 4th. So I wanted to highlight the importance of your decision to exercise your right to vote and the choices that are before you because many of the things that we'll be choosing in November in the elections will have impact on public education. On the ballot are issues that span from local to county, state, and national influence. At the federal level, we have the choice for the 14th District Representative to the U.S. House of Representatives. At the state level, there's a whole list of decisions that we have to make: Governor and Lieutenant Governor, State Attorney General, State Auditor, State Treasurer, the Ohio Secretary of State, and a State Board of Education member for the 5th District. At the state level, we also have representatives: the State Senator for the 27th Ohio District and also the State Representative for the 37th Ohio District. At the county level, we get to choose a representative for County Council at large, and there's two Summit County Charter Amendments to decide. Also, a new sales tax to be used to fund the Summit County Jail and improve the county's 911 radio system and for use in the county's general fund. And there's also many choices for 13 different judicial positions across the state and the region. And locally on our ballot here in Twinsburg, there are nine Charter Amendments to be determined by the city of Twi-- for the city of Twinsburg. While it is not the role of the Board of Education to offer opinions regarding your choices, I do believe that it's important to provide a reminder that it's your decision to exercise your right to vote, and it is important, and your decisions and your votes do count when it comes to public education. I encourage you to review the many choices that I've mentioned and don't settle on secondhand information or social media. The Ohio Secretary of State website has information regarding what is on the ballot, and their website provides links to the list of issues that be consi-- that are considered across the state. At a closer-to-home level, the Summit County Board of Education's-- or I'm sorry, Summit County Board of Elections website provides access to the ballots, the actual ballots that you'll see when you vote. If you go to a link under Elections and Ballot lookup, you can actually view and download a copy of the ballot that you'll be using when you go to the polls or if you vote absentee. I encourage you to do some research on these issues, and most importantly, I encourage you to exercise your right to vote. Tonight, a special welcome to the staff, students, and families of Wilcox Elementary, Dodge Intermediate, and Twinsburg High School. I know you're here tonight for some special recognition, so without further delay, I would like to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Powers for the Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, Mr. Stuber, Board of Education, community members. It's always great to see all of our families and students out for a board meeting, quite a crowd. Mr. Stuber, I don't know about you, but I am very thankful that we are not on the ballot for school levy. And again, I thank our community for two years in a row, last November and the prior, to support the school district. It is great to be where we are in our budget, and we're thankful for the support of our community in the past and moving into the future, too. We wish all of our public school district colleagues the best of luck at the election, and we just know what that's like. It's very, very difficult work, and certainly we try to keep the kids into the center of all that. But we are not on the ballot, thankfully so, and again, I just want to thank you for your support the last two elections in November. Board of Education, we have lots of students here tonight, a lot of things to celebrate, but I do have a couple of things I want to mention before getting to our Students of the Month and building highlights. First of all, I want to congratulate our homecoming king, Noah Edwards, and our homecoming queen, Megan Brown. They were both crowned last Friday, right before the home football game, very exciting for their families, as well as the families of the rest of the members of the Homecoming Court. It was a great night. Special thanks to our pep club advisor, Ms. Tanya Brennan, and our junior class advisor, Mrs. Julie Humble, and our outstanding student leaders at Twinsburg High School who really planned and facilitated a great week of homecoming activities, so we thank you for that. Saturday night was the dance. I always love going to the dance. It's so great to see the students dressed up in their very best, and I always kind of chuckle, and I said this was going to happen, and true to form, got there, and as usual, the girls come in looking wonderful, like models. About a half an hour into the dance, their shoes are off. So it's (laugh) it's kind of a funny event, but the girls and the guys look awesome, and it was just wonderful. The theme this year was "The Great Gatsby," and the kids just had a great time. So thanks to everyone at the high school that really made that happen for our students. Today at Twinsburg High School and at RB Chamberlain Middle School was our National Assessment Day. This was an opportunity for our students to take the Ready Step or the PSAT, and those two assessments are the first steps to getting our students on the right path for college and career success. So we will hear more this afternoon or this evening from Mr. Popovich about some outstanding students at the high school, and I understand he's going to give us a brief report about how the National Assessment Day happened this morning at the high school, and we look forward to that report as well. Board of Education, in this month's Superintendent message, which can be found as a link off of our district website, I share information about the assessments our students are taking here, not only in our district but across the state of Ohio, and I also provide some information about a brand-new proposed House Bill. It's House Bill 629. This particular House Bill would limit the amount of time schools would be able to test students using state-mandated assessments. Although the proposed number of hours may be too drastic of a change, House Bill 629 is encouraging as it invites dialogue about the number of hours our students dedicate to the completion of state-mandated assessments every year. And I invite our Board of Education and our community members to really stay close to this debate as it moves to the House, as it has great implications for the students here in our school district. Also, Board of Education, as you know, late today, we received a request from the Summit County Board of Health to put a notice on our district website. The Summit County Board of Health has asked public school districts in our county to provide for our parents some information about an Ebola information hotline. If you visit our website, there is a phone number if you have questions about Ebola, questions about anything in regard to that. Please look at our district website. There is a phone number that is manned throughout the day and into the evening for as long as necessary. We are taking this very seriously, making sure that we are watching precautions here in our school district, and should there be a need to communicate information to you, we will be posting that information on our district website, and also we use Blackboard Connect to inform our parents of any important information. And finally, Board of Education, you know, Mr. Welker came in late, no detention for him, though. He was actually busy in the office tonight. We received word at 1 o'clock today that the Ohio Department of Education had released the security grant applications for school districts across the state. And the way it works is the first in would be the first funded. So Mr. Welker was very busy submitting our application for all five of our school buildings and wanted to get it in today before he came over here, so we look forward to some funding news very shortly. And Chad, I want to thank you for that. He was very diligent, and he told me first thing this morning that I was going to get the application and to make sure I sent it right to him, and so we made sure that that happened, and here he is, and it's been submitted. So it will provide for us communication devices between our school district and the Police and Fire Department here in town. It will also potentially provide us some back funding for the welcome centers that we have established now in all five of our schools. So we look forward to some good news. And also, other work that Chad's been doing is, you know, I've been tweeting out the progress being made with the computer lab construction, both at the high school and at Dodge. Both of the labs are nearing completion. I hope that you have an opportunity to come and see these labs. It is hard to believe that one used to be a woodshop and the other one used to be old locker rooms. It looks fabulous. Computers are now being installed, and soon our students will be able to use the computer labs for instruction, research, and assessment. And again, Chad, you have been very busy. He's only been here three months, and there have been a lot of things that have happened in three months' time. He could probably tell you stories that would make your head spin, but we are very much pleased, Chad, that you are here and you are paying attention to detail, and that's very important, and making a lot of great things happen for our kids. So thank you very much. So, without further ado, we have a lot of wonderful students that we would like to present to our community this evening, and I understand Mrs. Kane-Criswell is going to help with the pins. So let's get situated. Mr. Welker, if you could help with the certificates.
Sure.
We're going to start with Wilcox Primary School because there are so many kids from Wilcox here tonight. And Mr. Scott Asti, our Assistant Principal, is here this evening to help. Boys and girls, it's really important that our whole community gets a great look at you tonight. So when your name is called, and Mr. Asti has prepared a very nice story about each one of you that I'll read, if you would come forward, shake Mrs. Kane-Criswell's hand, and she has a very nice pin for you on behalf of the Board of Education, and then you want to shake Mr. Asti's hand, and he has a certificate, and then Mr. Welker over there will help you get lined up. And if you could stay up here on the stage till all the boys and girls have been recognized, that would be great, because then we're going to take a picture, because your moms and dads want to have a nice picture of you for their scrapbooks, okay? So we're going to start with kindergarten, and first from Mrs. Troy's class, we have And Mrs. Troy writes, "Wilcox rocks because of Jason Chernick. He always does his best in our classroom and shows great citizenship by being a helper and following school rules. Jason loves to learn, and it really shows. Every day, he listens carefully during lessons and shares his ideas during discussions. He loves spending his extra time writing words and ideas in his spiral notebook. A great citizen, a great student, and a great guy. That's you, Jason. Next, from Mrs. Petress's classroom, we have Stephen Cooper. Mrs. Petress writes, "Wilcox rocks because Stephen Cooper is a kind and caring friend. He always tries to do his best."[746.01][746.01](Laughter)
Congratulations. Mrs. Kane-Criswell?
(laugh) And he follows all the school rules. He even practices at home, learning all of his letters and numbers and how to write his name. He has the best smile. Mrs. Petress is very happy to have Stephen in her classroom. Next, from Mrs. Terszek's kindergarten class, we have Thomas Daley. Mrs. Terszek writes, "Thomas is a kind and considerate boy. He is always willing to help his classmates and the teachers. Thomas is also aware of other people's feelings. He will offer a kind word or help when needed. Thomas is a pleasure to have in Ms. Terszek's classroom." Next, kindergartner from Mrs. Seidel's class is Drew Grossel. Drew is a great listener, responsible, and always prepared for the classroom lessons. She is helpful, kind, and a good friend to all of her classmates. Drew is truly a joy to have in class. From Mrs. Sutton's kindergarten class, we have Sam Leggert. Sam is a kind, caring, and compassionate student. He comes to school eager to learn and always has a positive attitude. Sam is thoughtful and willing to help out fellow students on a daily basis. He is an excellent role model, and Wilcox rocks because of Sam. Our next kindergarten child is from Mrs. Washington's class. Abby is an agreeable and willing worker in the classroom. She participates in classroom discussions and/or activities and is confident in doing so. She has a great attitude about school and is respectable to her peers. Abby is a pleasure to have in Mrs. Washington's class. Moving on to our big kids, the first graders, from Mrs. Zenz's class, we have Reese Bacon. Reese is a caring, friendly, smart, and respectable little girl. She always tries her best and accepts everyone for who they are. Reese is a generous and helpful child to all students and a role model for everyone. Mrs. Zenz is very proud to have Reese in her classroom this year. Next, from Mr. Scolero's class, we have Heidi Bryan. Mr. Scolero writes, "I have nominated Heidi Bryan for many reasons. She is an excellent student who always puts forth her best effort on everything that she does. Heidi is also an excellent peer model in our class, who not only uses good manners but is always looking for ways that she can help both her classmates and her teacher. Thanks, Heidi. You are one of the reasons that Wilcox writes-- rocks. Our next first grader is from Mrs. Littler's class. Madison is responsible, respectful, and caring. She gets along well with her peers and is always willing to help others. She always engages in class discussions and activities with great enthusiasm. Madison is a role model for other first graders in the classroom. And Mrs. Littler writes, "I am glad she is in my class. Her smile brightens my day. You rock, Madison." Our next first grader is from Ms. Lipnos's class, and this is Erin Popovic. Erin is a wonderful young lady. She is true-- she's a true role model at Wilcox. Erin is always modeling how to be responsible and respectful. She is also always caring. Great job, Erin. Erin also did a superior job on her last math test with a perfect score. Erin is a joy to work with every day. Keep up the excellent work, Erin. Our next first grader is from Mrs. Scolero's class. Fay is an outstanding student and citizen. She works hard all day, listening, participating, following directions, and doing her very best work. She is an excellent role model for her classmates and is a joy to teach each day. Great job, Fay. Mrs. Scolero, so glad you are in her class. And our last first grader is from Mrs. Lennox's class. This is Samantha Yellen. Samantha is a wonderful student. She is always prepared, listens to all directions, and does her work in a timely and neat manner. Samantha is a good friend to all and is one of Mrs. Lennox's go-to students, so when another student is unsure of what to do or where to put things, they come and they ask Samantha. Samantha rocks, and she's a pleasure to have in Mrs. Lennox's class. Let's give all of the Wilcox Primary School Students of the Month a round of applause. Okay, boys and girls, if you want to hold your certificate so it's facing out, but don't cover your face, okay? And smile your very best smiles, because your moms and dads and grandmas and grandpas and family would like to have a nice picture of everybody. All right, boys and girls, congratulations, and you may be seated. We'd like to ask Mrs. Wurstler, our principal from George D. Dodge Intermediate School, along with her Assistant Principals, Mr. Doug Hyam and Mr. Ron Holland, to please Okay, we'll just pause for another second or two while our families are transitioning Okay, our Student of the Month students from George G. Dodge Intermediate School are selected from their Cub community for the following reasons. These wonderful students are outstanding leaders, they have great citizenship, they have high academic performance, and they try very hard in school every day, they have outstanding social skills, and their overall accomplishments are awesome. So we are so proud to announce the Panda Cub Students of the Month from George G. Dodge Intermediate School. And, boys and girls, just like we did for the Wilcox Primary School students, if you would please come forward and shake the hand of Mrs. Kane-Criswell and Mrs. Wurstler, Mr. Holland, Mr. Hyam, and then please stand at the front here on the stage till all of the students from your school are called so that we can have a nice photo opportunity. We would appreciate that. So let's start with our 4th grade students. First of all, we have Kylie Burns. Moving on to our 5th grade students, we have Nathan Anderson. Moving on to our 6th graders, we have Natalie Schmidt. Please join me in congratulating the Students of the Month from George G. Dodge Intermediate Okay, guys, if you could turn your certificates facing forward and give your best smile so that your moms and dads and grandparents and family can get a great opportunity to Okay, thank you very much. We're very proud of each and every one of you. And now, Mrs. Wurstler would like to introduce the Employees of the Month from Dodge Intermediate
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. I'm going to begin with Connie Hill. Connie Hill has been at Dodge for approximately 18 years. She has been at the 4th grade level teaching Language Arts and Social Studies. She is a board-certified teacher. Mrs. Hill has served on many committees to help Dodge be a great place for kids to learn. She has been on the Building Leadership Team, the Right to Read, and the RTI Committee to just to name a few. Mrs. Hill's students love her class and all the colorful displays she has posted around her room and building. Her storefront is all about flowers, which kind of describes Mrs. Hill's personality. She is just sweet. Next is Patty Spring. Mrs. Spring is a looping teacher. She loops with a group of students from 5th grade to 6th grade. Students love her class. She is known around the building as the nature lover. The nature lover. At any time, you will find Mr. Stein, Twinsburg City's naturalist, in her class, and together they provide amazing outdoor experiences for her students right in our backyard. Mrs. Spring's classroom is full of all different kinds of living things, from snakes to butterflies. She loves them all. She is an innovator and will try new things, and will advocate for all of her students as they were, as they say, they were her own. She tutors students after school on her own time and is most likely the last one in the building working on projects. She is one of a kind. We love having her as part of the Dodge family.
Patty and Connie, thank you for making it happen every day for our students at Dodge. It is a pleasure to be your colleague, and we congratulate you. Thank you, Mrs. Wurstler, and Mr. Holland and Hyam. Always a pleasure. And now, we'd like to ask Mr. Alex Popovich, one of the Assistant Principals from Twinsburg High School, to come up to recognize some outstanding high school students.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers, Board of Education, community members, families. It is my pleasure this evening to kind of give an update on a couple of building highlights and then roll into some student achievements. Today, as Mrs. Powers mentioned, was our National Assessment Testing Day. Our 9th graders, 10th graders, and 11th graders were all taking a test. Our seniors got the morning off, which I'm sure they appreciated. And all I can say is it went extremely smooth considering, you know, we were having almost 1,000 kids taking an assessment. Maybe if we could get about 10 more minutes into next year's calendar to kind of factor in some of those, the breaks, and actually, there's a little bit of instruction with the PSAT that, you know, we're going to make the adjustment for next year, and the seniors wouldn't mind 10 extra minutes to come in, you know, and they're not going to, they're not going to be fighting on that. So where this kind of, you know, leads for the Ready Step, which is what the 9th graders and last month, we, you know, presented that, that the 8th grade and the 9th grade would be taking that, and then the 10th grade and 11th grade took the PSAT. And to kind of understand the importance of that, yes, obviously, it's a precursor to, you know, what an SAT would look like, but there is something that's extremely important that's tied to the PSAT, and those are, you know, the National Merit Semi-finalist or Scholarship Program and the National Achievement Scholarship Program. So one year ago this time, in the fall of 2013-- time, in the fall of 2013, approximately 1.4 million high school junior students from more than 22,000 high schools took this PSAT. So our current senior class, when they were juniors last year, took that test. The nationwide pool of semi-finalists representing less than 1% of current US high school seniors includes the highest-scoring entrants in each state. So we are proud tonight to kind of have two separate groups out of this. Four outstanding young ladies that scored extremely high and were saying less than 1% of all that took this test nationally, and we have three National Merit Semi-finalists, and we have one National Achievement Scholarship or Semi-finalist. And the National Achievement is actually like a separate scholarship opportunity. And what I mean by scholarship opportunities, these young ladies will, and to my understanding, they already have, filled out the applications. There's another essay that they had to write. Why wouldn't, you know, write one more essay for something else for scholarship honors, and have their academic records reviewed, their SAT scores that they've, you know, taken since submitted, and this consideration, you know, could land them some nice scholarship money. That won't be announced until beginning in April 2015, but still, these young ladies are in the running for that, and that's part of, you know, one big reason why the PSA, or the PSAT can lead to something further from, you know, today's National Assessment Day. So, without further ado, our three National Merit Semi-finalists are, and I will call your names, and you guys, ladies, come on up and grab your certificate here. Shayla Galler. Nea Sharma. Abby Williamson. And our National Achievement Semi-finalist, Deja Rush. So like I said, these four outstanding young ladies scored in the top 1%, or actually less than 1% of all, you know, 1.4 million or approximate juniors that took this test last year. And, you know, we're very proud. This is actually a little bit higher even in terms of numbers than we normally achieve, so we'll take it. And I think these four are going to do extremely well no matter what they do past this place. But, you know, we're definitely wishing them luck in the, you know, the opportunity to earn some scholarship money for the next level of their career. So, thank you again, ladies. Okay, our next part of our, you know, building highlights is kind of an update on PBIS, and I know that I've been here a couple of board meetings in a row where that's come up this year. And being one of the members of our committee at the high school, trying to implement, you know, positive behavior intervention supports for our kids this school year has been one of our big tasks. I'm proud to announce that we did have an outside speaker by the name of Alex Simon come in on September 26th, and he did an extremely powerful and moving assembly for both our 9th and 10th grade at first block, and then our juniors and seniors second block. And the kids took to him like anything that, you know, nothing I've ever actually seen in my 12 years. So, having that to start off and kind of kick things going here into what has been pretty much a good movement of school spirit. Our student sections at the sporting events are well-represented, doing the right thing, and what we wanted to do is, as we're the only building that hadn't had this, is to kind of bring back Student of the Month. What we did is we added a different spin, though, than I think some of the other Students of the Month may or may not have, you know, that's, it's kind of what we wanted to say is, we have a lot of opportunities for kids to get recognized in high school, and as you can see, just, you know, there are opportunities that are nationally recognized, lots through testing and academic achievements. And not to say that these students that are our first Students of the Month aren't academically talented. It's more or less that they might have got caught doing the right thing, and they weren't really trying to, you know, put it out there that, hey, somebody please notice me at this moment in time that I'm doing the right thing. But they're kids that come here and represent us, and this is what we want to highlight each and every month. So our staff has taken to this. We got some nominations last month, and we're even getting more now for the following month. And kind of our process with this is, you know, they each get a T-shirt, you know, they got that, that's fine, and they got called down, they were kind of like, oh, okay, cool, Student of the Month, you know? And we do want to, we're working on banners and putting up, you know, a wall of where their pictures can go for each month, and they all had their headshots taken. And jokingly, they didn't have to take selfies or anything like that. But, you know, because I laugh at the, you know, the Wilcox kids all line up and get pictures. Our high school kids would probably just snap one real quick of themselves. However, what we have here is our first Tiger Strong Students of the Month. And what does it mean to be strong? Well, it means to be, you know, in our acronym, strong, to be safe, to be a team player, to be respectful, to be organized, to be noble, and to be goal-oriented. So those are the qualities that we're looking for. And teachers wrote in some nice submissions for each of these students, and I think all but one is here this evening. I know the first one that's not here, but I'll still read in is 10th grader Gianna Burbrier. She was actually nominated by her math teacher, Mrs. Grummett, and she basically said, she goes, listen, she goes, you know, in emails, she wanted to know, she's like, is this, what I do, do I submit this? You know, it's kind of funny how she puts this in writing. She goes, but let me know, because I have a really great kid in concepts. Participates all the time, does everything I ask of her, and on top of it, all is super polite, respectful, and nice. And she said Gianna Burbrier is that kid. So, I know Gianna couldn't be here tonight, but we did want to make, you know, make mention that she was representative of our two Tiger Strong Student of the Month. Our next student. Our next student, if he wants to come on up here and get his certificate, is William Dietz. William is a 10th grader at THS. He was nominated actually by his geometry teacher, Mr. Chapel. And Mr. Chapel writes, William is an excellent student in geometry class. He has great work ethic and participates well in class. In addition, William is a generally nice person, always saying good morning and have a great day or have a great weekend. And I can actually nominate that because I don't think there's a day that doesn't go by that William doesn't say hello to me, or on the way out the door say, have a nice night, Mr. Popovich. And, you know, I don't think of anybody that's really a happier guy with a better demeanor. So, William, congratulations. Thank you for being Tiger Strong. Our next student is junior Desiree Cotton. Okay, Desiree was nominated by her language arts teacher, Mrs. Chernick, so this is a little bit longer of a response. Mrs. Chernick was here. That's what, it was kind of funny. But, she said, I've known Desiree for the past two years. Last year, she was in my drama class, and this year, she is in my English 11 class. Last year, she really adopted a student that was struggling with confidence and issues at home, and truly tried to encourage that classmate in so many ways. Her support of this classmate drew Desiree's big heart to my attention, but I noticed as the year progressed that she really was supportive of everyone. Though others in the class were louder and more dramatic with their comments, Desiree went out of her way to make sure encouragement wasn't generic. Classmates were drawn to her for feedback because she would pick out the positive things that were unique to individual people rather than simply adding great job to every performance. She truly enjoyed seeing her classmates succeed and celebrated with them. Her thoughtfulness about providing constructive feedback to really help peers improve is the thing that really stuck with me after the class ended, and I was very happy to see her on my English class roster for 2014, 2015. On the first day of school, I greeted another female classmate and mentioned that I was glad that she was in the class because I enjoyed reading her poetry. Desiree turned around and began telling me that she loved this classmate's poetry as well, but the classmate did not believe in herself. Desiree went on to tell me several different ways her friend was wonderful and needed to believe in herself. Needless to say, the smile on the face of her friend was huge. I purposely sat Desiree next to a less studious classmate, hoping that her focus would have a good influence, and I regularly see Desiree explaining things to that classmate and other classmates. She is wonderful at keeping a group on task without getting frustrated at people, and can diplomatically redirect off-task behavior. That was good. Despite her great talents, her leadership flies under the radar because she is quiet and humble. I would love her, I would love for her to know that people pay attention and recognize her gifts. Our next student of the month is junior Gary Heath. Gary was nominated by his coach, Officer Ron Frisella, our school resource officer for golf. Officer Frisella writes, I would like to nominate junior Gary Heath. Gary is a team captain on our varsity golf team. He has led our squad with his leadership ability on and off the course. Gary led our squad to its second straight league championship and will be named to the NOC All-Conference Team as he finished second in scoring average. Gary has maintained his high level of academics, which include several AP classes. I have seen Gary at many extracurricular events, including volleyball and football, cheering on his other peers and showing his school pride. Gary has not only performed at a high level both academically and athletically, but has shown some great leadership amongst his team and done everything asked of him by his coach. So I believe Gary is the perfect example of what a student at Twinsburg High School should be. Our next student is junior Nick Ryan. Nick was actually nominated by a couple of his teachers, Mrs. Houston and Mrs. Spellman. And I'll try to read here both. And Mrs. Houston writes, I would like to recommend Nick for Student of the Month. He's a quiet young man with a strong work ethic, moral values, and compassion for others. These are qualities that he brought to class each day last year. She said, this school year, Nick's friend was in a critical situation that because of Nick stepping up and reporting information to the office, saved his friend in a serious moment. Nick did the right thing helping his friend as soon as he knew there was a problem. He is truly a kind and caring person that deserves to be recognized. And in essence, Mrs. Spellman echoed exactly the same thing in her sentiment because Nick stepped up and actually demonstrated what it means to be truly a friend in a moment. And so for that, you know, Nick's definitely deserving of this honor. And our final Student of the Month is Senior Eric Murdock. Eric was nominated by actually his math teacher, Ms. Manley. She kind of points out, you know, there's some obvious qualities that she appreciates about him, you know, saying he's extremely nice, he's hardworking, he's polite, and probably his best quality is, you know, being extremely respectful of people. And I can actually echo that, too, as any time I've ever encountered Eric in, you know, my four years of knowing him, he is exactly that. But one of the things that stuck out, and this is again kind of an example, something simple that somebody did that many others probably wouldn't do, was that Ms. Manley, you know, simply saw him walking down the hall one of the days. It was, you know, probably leaving her class to go to, you know, to the restroom or something because she had saw him in the hallway when not many students were around. And she said, as I saw him walking down the hallway, I saw him pause and pick up multiple volleyball locker decorations that had fallen down off of some other girl's lockers. Just out of the kindness of his heart, because, you know, there's a lot of kids that'll walk by everything that's laying on the floor, just kind of not even pay attention to that. And he simply picked them up, put them back on the locker, don't even know if he knew the person. Ms. Manley's not even sure of that. But just, that caught her at that moment in time, and I think, knowing the kind of kid that Eric is, it's just one more reason that, you know, hey, when you're doing the right thing, and someone might just catch you, you should be recognized for that. Okay? So, these are our first, yeah, our first Tiger Strong Students of the Month. And that's it for THS. Thank you.
We have so many reasons to be proud of the students at Twinsburg High School, and these students are certainly many of the reasons why we can be proud of the students and what they do at the high school. And, guys, all the things that Mr. Popovich read about you made me feel really good that you are students here, that you represent 4,200 students so remarkably well. And thank you for your efforts, and thank you for making the right choice, and thank you for making a difference in the lives of other kids at Twinsburg High School, because people notice. Thank you very much.
Thanks to everybody for coming. If you wish to depart, now would be the time to do that. Thank you. As they are exiting, we'll move on in the agenda. Our next item is the committee reports. Do we have anybody with committee reports tonight? One announcement, we do have a finance committee scheduled for October 30th at 6:00 PM at the Board of Education office. And I know, Kathy, you and I, you set a date, there will be an athletic committee meeting. We just haven't set a date yet, and as soon as we do, that'll be published. Is there anything else that you guys want to report on? Any updates? Okay.
Curriculum and technology will remain the 27th of June at RB.
Next on the agenda is remonstrance. We do not have any blue cards, if I'm correct, Mr. Dreho.
Nope.
So we will move past that on into the agenda. First on our agenda for board action tonight, under the treasurer's report and recommendations, there are three items here, and without objection, I will read these together as a trend agenda. Item G1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes from the regular meeting on October 1st, 2014, as sent to the board under separate cover. Item G2, that the Board of Education accepts the following financial report for the month of August 2014, bank reconciliation, the general fund financial summary report, and the financial report by fund. And the last item, G3, that the Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of August 2014. The total, which includes payroll, is $5,163,849.96. Is there a motion for these three items? Moved by Ms. Kane Criswell. A second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms. Terrell Waldron. Any discussion on these three items? Roll call, please. Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
And those three items pass 5-0. Next on the agenda are action items under personnel. This is Agenda Item H. Without objection, what I would like to do is read H1 and 2 together, consent agenda, and we will act on H3 separately. Item H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, H1, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified, pending satisfactory ORC background check. Item H2, that the Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, H2, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified, pending ORC background check. Is there a motion for these two agenda items?
Some.
Moved by Mr. Felber. A second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Any discussion on these employment items? Roll call, please. Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
And those two items pass 5-0. The last item under personnel, Item H3, that the Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, H3, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified, pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for this one agenda item?
Some.
Moved by Mr. Felber. A second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Terrell Waldron. Any discussion on this item?
Um, yes, I abstain, will abstain from this vote because I have a relationship with someone listed in the, in the, on names there, in the list here.
Anything else? Roll call, please. Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Abstain.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
And that item passes four votes yes with one abstention. Next in the agenda, under new business action items, we have six that I would like to read together, consent agenda, and then we will act on items seven and eight separately. Item I1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation of $511.11 to Samuel Bissell Elementary School for educational purposes from the Target Take-Charge of Education Donation Program, per the attached exhibit, I1. Item I2, that the Board of Education accepts a donation for 300... Item I2, that the Board of Education accepts a donation for $300 to Wilcox Primary School from The Gap Incorporated, funds to support Wilcox's PBIS Building Initiative, per the attached exhibit I2. Item I3, that the Board of Education approves the attached listing of items to be deleted from inventory, this is in exhibit I3. Action item I4, that the Board of Education accepts a donation of two credenses, two announcement boards, and two microscopes from the City Council of the City of Twinsburg at the estimated value of $100. These items will be used at the RB Chamberlain Middle School. Item I5, that the Board of Education approves a settlement agreement for special education services provided at Kids Link Neuro-Behavioral Center from September 2014 through January 2015, in the amount not to exceed $30,000. This is a general fund expense as sent to the board under separate cover. And item I6, that the Board of Education approves a memorandum of understanding with the Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County for participation in the Ohio Online Learning Program, or OOLP, at a cost of $2,640 per full-time student and $275 per semester course for part-time students, as sent to the board under separate cover. Is there a motion for these six agenda items, please?
Some.
Moved by Ms. Davis, a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kane Criswell. Any discussion on these particular items? Roll call, please. Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
And those six items pass 5-0. Lastly, on the agenda for action tonight are two, two items requiring approval, are expenditure of funds. This is still under action items, new business. I will read I7 and 8 together, consent agenda, without objection. I7, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves change orders from Lauren Building Company of Chagrin Falls for the purpose of new computer labs at Dodge Intermediate School and Twinsburg High School at a cost not to exceed $6,805.50. Change orders 2 and 6 address additional painting needs at Dodge Intermediate. Change order 3 addresses electrical conduit repairs. Change order 4 addresses excess trash removal. And change order 5 addresses the additional painting needs at Twinsburg High School. And change order 7 addresses additional VCT flooring needs at Dodge Intermediate. These expenses will be paid for with permanent improvement funds. Item I8, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the purchase of three stock unit 72-passenger buses at a cost of $78,427 for each bus totaling $235,281. These buses will be purchased from Cardinal Bus Sales and Service of Lima, Ohio, and the buses will be paid for with permanent improvement funds. Is there a motion for these two agenda items?
Some.
Moved by Mr. Felber, a second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. And I think, just one note that I have under I8, we've been talking about the buses almost all summer, and we recognize that there was, a few years ago, we skipped a year when we replaced buses, and I think it finally caught up with us when the inspectors picked up some excess rust, if you will. I want to compliment Mr. Welker and his review of the bus needs, and specifically that our usual annual purchase of buses, rather than waiting a few months for the price to go up, the way we do this with the consortium that we buy the buses through, recognize that if we acted on this now as a board, we could save a little bit of money before the bus prices go up. So if we're going to do this, now is the time to do it. Sometimes we wait until later in the year to make this decision, but I want to thank you, Mr. Welker, for bringing this to our attention earlier rather than later so that we could act on a, on a better price. So, any other discussion on these two items? Roll call, please. Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
And those two items pass 5-0. Moving on in the agenda to miscellaneous, do we have anything from the board members or administrators?
I just have, I have one thing I would like to wish good luck to one of the high school's newest club's speech and debate, as their first tournament coming up this Saturday at Riviere High School. So I wish them a lot of luck, and I believe we have quite a group starting to look at that club and participate. It should be interesting.
How many will be traveling? How many students?
I think there's only seven traveling, but I know there's 20 to 30. This club has only been active about three or four weeks. So to get prepared for the variety of, of options they have, there's 17, 18 different types of things that they can do in debate. They pick something, they've been working, and I also like to congratulate Ms. Megan Murphy, who's the advisor, for getting them ready and practicing their, their meeting two, three times a week. And I know they're practicing, I, I know a couple of students that are going to be taking advantage of the day off for practice. And they're, they're going into it with the right attitude, it's just the beginning, but I wish them a lot of luck.
How many schools will be in this, do you know?
I don't know. Normally, the ones that I viewed last year, there were anywhere from eight to 10 different schools there. I know they're entering the novice division, which is for a new club, but there could be, you know, in some of the schools, I, you know, had teams as large as 60 students, but had been around for 100 years, literally. I'm not making that up. I believe that was Worcester. But, you know, it's just the beginning. I think a couple of students said they, you know, they didn't want to go in the first, first couple of weeks, but they're preparing. And we're looking forward to seeing what they think. We'll have a report in two weeks.
Any other comments under miscellaneous? Administrators, Mrs. Powers, Mr. Welker?
Nothing more this evening, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Reho?
Good.
Okay, the board does have need for an executive session tonight. I will make the motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session at 7:58 PM. Mr. Reho, that might be a record. To discuss the discipline of a student and a staff member and the compensation of public employees as per Board of Education Policy 0166A. Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kane Criswell. Just to note that there will be no action required after this executive session. Roll call, please. Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
That motion passes 5-0. I'd like to thank everybody who stayed and attended the whole meeting tonight. Thank you very much.